All right, it is 6 o'clock. It's Thursday, December 19th, and I call the meeting of the Brainerd -- the special, very special meeting of the Brainerd City Council and joint meeting with Public Utilities to order. Tony, can you call the roll?
Stunick?
Here.
Terry?
Here.
Stengline?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Chesok?
Here.
Mike O'Day?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Bado?
Here.
Mike Anglin?
Ericson?
Mark O'Day? Whatso? Matten?
All right, we're going to add one thing in here. It is a regular meeting, so I ask you all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one agenda item this evening. That's to discuss the creation of a single integrated city IT department. Mr. Chesok, you asked for this. Anything you want to add before I turn it over to our staff?
No, sir.
Okay. So I know one of the things is that there are going to be -- that we have available presentations from IT staff as to how this could or shouldn't work, our opinions. Either of you like to go first?
You have three to five minutes to decide.
We were going to do ours together.
Do it together. Please stand up, give your names, because we are on YouTube and your positions with the city.
Shawn Strong, IT GIS Director.
I'm Aaron Anderson, BPU IT Supervisor.
Perfect. Give us your presentation.
So, the background here, well, I'll just hit the first slide here. Of course, this is not going to work while I'm here. Are you on PowerPoint? There we go. Got that out of the way. Figured the first slide we should do before we even get into the old presentations is our introductions, because a lot of BPU probably doesn't know me, and a lot of you probably don't know Aaron, or even the rest of the staff. So, background here, I've been here 18 years, been doing IT for 26, previously running a county, and previously before that doing actual GIS work. Also in City Hall you have Lori, who's been here for 20 years, also doing IT work for a good chunk of it. And then Aaron here has been doing, says, over 20 years.
Collectively, over 20 years of IT experience in utilities, private manufacturing, fracking, architectural engineering, public school systems, and the Marine Corps.
So, we just wanted to bring that up, that we've all been doing this for at least 20 years, or not new kids on the block, or recent graduates, or anything. We kind of have this down pretty good, I think. I like to think so, anyway. Then, to your point, Kelly, is back in August, we were both asked to create presentations with some specific items in it to outline the challenges and opportunities for possibly integrating IT. We both sat down and drafted our own proposals, our own presentations, which never really saw the light of day. We eventually sat down together and picked one, and added tidbits from the other one back and forth. So we only ever had one presentation that was in final format. And then we used that for at least two meetings, maybe even other meetings. I think it's 18 slides, yeah, it's 18 slides. That was just the stats to throw up on the wall for discussion purposes. So, I don't know, should we go through all of these? Or do you want to short circuit the thing and just go straight to questions? Or what's your preference?
Have you all read all the slides? Done your homework?
I have not seen them.
Okay. So we can go through them. There's only 18. I mean, we've got, everybody's got the whole evening blocked off, I hope.
Just so I know, the PDFs, these are exactly the texts that are in the PowerPoint. Would that be correct, that we got?
Yes. PDFs are just saved as. So this is exactly what we presented originally on October 2nd, and then again, later in October, I don't remember the dates. Again, with the introduction-y kind of stuff. You got Shawn and Lori here at City Hall doing all the departments, including, you know, airports and cable channels and all those things. Then you got Aaron. Now, Abby has since departed, so you have only Aaron over there doing the business office, and then the divisions, electric, water, and wastewater. I assume everybody knows that stuff, but it was just part of the discussion.
This slide was a example of what Rochester Public Utilities has over there, aside from their city IT department. So, they're all, they're separated as well down there. And we just threw that in there as an example of what they, what it takes to run a utility.
So one of the first slides requested was challenges, opportunities, that kind of stuff. On the city side, the two people that are here can handle the day-to-day keeping the lights on. We are now no longer able to take on big projects. We're at capacity, so there's no more room to do big things. Down the road, the police department's migration to their new law enforcement package is great. Good thing, it's going to the cloud. But the challenge there is right now, the squad mobiles go through county resources. So there's a problem in the middle of the night, the whole county's going to know it, and the county, the 14 IT people at the county are going to deal with it. When this goes to the cloud, early '26? '27?
Yeah, probably late '26.
Somewhere in there. The police squads will no longer go through the county, so the city's going to have to pick up that slack of the after-hours stuff. So it's just a consideration to put out there. Of late, especially, we've had a whole lot of staff wanting to do more with GIS. I can do GIS, I do not have time to do GIS. So, that would be a benefit. And then this cable channel thing, ever since they canceled the program and all the staff retired or quit, it's kind of, it's going to be a discussion point coming up here pretty soon about where that goes. So, on the BPU side, do you want to cover your side?
Yeah, BPU side, we have infrastructure improvements that we're doing, we're running our own fiber. It's just me over there right now. So, I know this was presented as a slide that was when we had a second IT person over there, but in that capacity, it's still just been me over there. That's why we were requesting both the network administrator and systems administrator to get that coverage that we need for running the utility at a 24/7 capacity.
Okay. So, we came up with some of the places that could eliminate the duplication. Obviously, that's kind of the point, is efficiency and whatever else. Things like basic support, help desk, whatever. The bigger, the issue there is myself, or Aaron by himself over there right now, being heavily involved in something super important, and the phone starts ringing because the printer doesn't work, or somebody forgot their password, or whatever else, you can imagine. It's just, it's not efficient way of doing things to have your highest skilled people be doing mop and the floors kind of stuff. Tenant, domain administration's becoming a big deal, that's all this stuff is going to the cloud, all our Microsoft Office products, the security related to it, the identity piece of it that lets you log into every website under the sun as a single username. There's a lot of working parts in there that we're not going to get into tonight, but we're both doing it at this current point in time. Supporting the standard software stuff, maybe I don't need to run through all of these, but upgrades, patching, that kind of stuff. Phone administration can be kind of tedious sometimes. Purchasing, we buy completely different stuff at all times. You could get into a more efficient way of purchasing things. Backing up data, web and social GIS. Yeah, I'm just reading it to you at this point, sorry. And of course, this was months ago. At the time, the term "one network" is being used a lot. Never really an option. We, the city already has segregated networks, BPU already has segregated networks. We're not going to combine those together, and we're certainly not going to combine the four of them, or more, together. So, we just wanted to, back in October, make it clear that that's not really an option to actually combine that stuff. Also, on the hardware, software stuff, another couple slides, I have everything listed out here, that, of what we currently use in different systems, and we have almost nothing in common. So, if integration goes forward, not a whole lot can change on day one until things age out, turnover, become redundant, and have to get replaced. Perfect example's the finance package. The city's five years into a finance package in the last 20 years. BPU is, what, three years into a finance package that should last 20 years. Without just buying brand-new stuff, that's not going to change anytime soon, regardless of integration or not.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, you can ask questions.
I was going to have questions at the end, but if you want to.
When you talk about a finance package, like we purchased, one for utilities, one for the city, what is your estimated cost at something like that?
We paid a quarter million on the city side. What did you guys pay for Henco?
$60,000.
$60,000 a year?
$60,000 a year.
Yeah, it's one of the most expensive things.
Utility-based software. So, and then, you know, that's, that can't change. I mean, it can, but we'd have to redo our entire software. But the previous side was also just pointing out IT-related things as the one network. That's not including BPU's OT stuff. So operational technology stuff, which includes lift stations, electrical reclosures, and all that kind of stuff. That's a whole separate world altogether than what's included in the IT stuff. So, when I talk about what we can and can't do, what's best practice for IT and OT, or the security of the utility itself, that's what I'm looking at when I approach stuff like this. When we get thrown around one, one-network terminologies, that's, that's where I'm looking at it from that point of view. Shawn will have a completely separate point of view when it comes to things like this. Does that make sense? Kind of?
Sort of.
Okay, we'll, we'll get through it.
It's okay. Anything else, Mr. Chesok?
That's good, thank you.
Oh, so we had the current position titles and just the first few sentences off each position description. Again, this, this presentation was created for staff to talk in a small environment, not for the limelight like this. So, any questions on this? Or we'll just keep going, because you know these positions exist. I'm sure you've all seen the org chart enough times. This was just more discussion. Currently, myself and the IT specialist over here on the city side, and you got Aaron and the previous IT data analyst over at the BPU side, which is now vacant. Industry standards, best practices, whatever, there's a hierarchy to the way you do staff. You have your directors, and your administrators, and your specialists, and your technicians, and, well, and your analysts in there, too. There's, there's a hierarchy to it, so we were just putting down what kind of hierarchy would probably be needed to pull this off. The lighter gray, which doesn't really show up well, are kind of the, what we thought would be future potential someday down the road, but not maybe right away. And this is so outdated now that it doesn't even matter much. And this is a graphical version of something like that. You'd have to have a department head and then put him in there in the right order. Any questions? Or maybe you don't want him till the end, but. So, pros and cons. Some of the efficiencies, they do exist, including standard operations and processes. But at the same time, it'd also make it more complex, larger footprint. So there's a, the pro and con there is it's, kind of butchering this, more efficient, but a much bigger thing. So, how do you quantify whether that's better or not? I don't know. Specialization, kind of mentioned this before, if staff can specialize on specific things instead of being the jack-of-all-trades, master-of-none kind of thing, well, master-of-all. Mentioned the distractions and the doing the tasks that should probably be delegated to lower-paid staff. Is that a bad way of saying it? And then additionally, backup. Right now, we just have an unwritten policy at City Hall that myself and the IT specialist can't be gone on the same day. We just do that. Aaron right now has no choice. If he's sick or on vacation, there's nobody at BPU. So, the pro to that is having more depth, more people to cover when people take time off or are gone. And one of the cons there is, as we've already kind of hammered out here, is not a whole lot could actually change on day one. In fact, not a whole lot could change in the first year. So it would be a very slow trickle as things, as we mentioned, turn over. Budget stuff, you want to throw something in there?
Well, I had just wanted to, going off of that slide, I had written on my PowerPoint that integrating a city IT department with a utility IT department presents significant challenges beyond the operational and technical realms. The potential for increased costs, both in short and long term, constrain budgets and lead to unanticipated financial pressures. Moreover, the legal and contractual barriers are substantial with increasing existing agreements, regulatory requirements, which is why I was trying to lead with the OT security side of stuff with the electrical and water, and wastewater ones with Minnesota Department of Health, and labor concerns, potentially complicating or even preventing a successful integration. These factors make it critical to carefully evaluate the risks and benefits, which we're trying to do right now, before pursuing such an action. Maintaining separate IT departments with distinct budgets and legal frameworks may better serve the needs of both the city and the utility, ensuring each can focus on its unique challenges without the complication of integration. So that's kind of the paragraph I wrote to spinoff of that one, that last slide, anyway. Sorry, continue.
Very good. Budget-wise, IT is just purely speculating how this would be handled. Obviously, city side's paid with tax levy dollars, and BPU's paid by ratepayer dollars. We all know this. Questions that we have, would have to be answered at some point is how payroll would happen, how costs are allocated. You already have a whole lot of money invested on both sides. How does that, what happens to the ownership in the future? How do you plan for big capital things if you need a, a single big-ticket item? These are finance questions, but it was just put on here so that it could be talked about in staff meetings, so. Any questions there?
Do questions at the end.
You can ask for questions. That was just what was in my head.
Sometimes if it's pertinent to the slide, yeah.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So, this is kind of a rough inventory of where we're kind of at with some things. There's much more to this. But the point of this is not that you care what all these words are. The point is, I think I put an asterisk, yeah. I put an asterisk after the thing where we're even remotely related. Currently, everything we have are totally different products, except the virtualization platform we use on servers and the GIS we use, and we both happen to both by Dell computers.
And they're customized to each operation, if that makes sense.
Right.
Even with licensing with GIS. So we have specialized licensing for the utility for GIS, which will, oh, go ahead. Sorry, I don't want to interrupt you again.
Okay, it's your show, too. So anyway, a lot of gibberish, but none of them are the same. This is even more, this is on the security side. The city side is pretty much exclusively Cisco products, which all talk and work together. BPU is almost exclusively Fortinet stuff, which is just a different product. With all their individual pieces that work together, you can't, you can't efficiently, or at least well, mix and match these things. So it's complete replacement on one side or the other at some point in the future. Obviously, nothing happens initially, but this is just showing you, the one and only thing is we both sometimes use TeamViewer. Otherwise, we have no softwares in common. Here were some numbers, 24 numbers, pretty similar, actually. BPU's got a little more in the operating, scooch more in the capital. You know, we both have independent departments that pay for some of their own software. On the city side, if police pays for their own software, NeoGov or HR is specific to a department, otherwise all the other software is through IT. I think you probably do similar. Danny says yes.
Yeah, we do.
Well, we'll keep moving on. Legal or contractual barriers. And again, these are slides that were 10 bullet points of things to cover, so everybody knows the HIPAA stuff and the PCI stuff, payment card. The CEGIS side is the law enforcement stuff. You got FERC, and MDH, and MCPA. There's rules and regulations on all these things, and different networks have to be compliant with different things. On the city, we also have the FAA side of things, which is, sure. Which is part of the reason that a lot of these networks can't be combined. You have two different unions currently, which everybody knows. Like Aaron mentioned earlier, some of the licensing is specific to certain industries. And this was added, both Clifton, Larson &amp; Allen, and Baker-Tilly both recommend against financial integration. And I, have any more on that?
No, I think we got the updated slide, so.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Great, that was discussion, then. So, the summary. There are some efficiencies, but more complex. Specialized networks can't be combined, and BPU certainly needs to add some IT staff. And this was still at the time when we didn't know what the future role of the IT data analyst was going to be.
We had another set of slides, correct?
We have, this is still going through the October stuff.
Sure.
So at the time, in October, we just threw this out there, you have options. You can essentially do nothing, structure-wise, and BPU will add the staff they need. You can still add the staff at BPU, but do more collaborative things when they come up, or of course, the full-on joint IT department. And I think we whittled it down to two options now, so. There. So that was the presentation given in October, and a few other meetings after that. Any questions on the whole thing? Okay, perfect. What's changed since then? Data analyst is now vacant, meaning they have even less resources at BPU.
We don't plan on refilling that in 2025.
There you go. They don't plan on refilling that one, because they're planning to fill the other two, the network administrator and system administrator, in '25. BPU has the two additional ones, and the city is just still the same two that we've had. That gets a little small there. If integration's pursued, sorry, I got to read this slide myself. Somewhere along the line, have to figure out how costs get allocated, personnel costs at least, of, how do I say this? Similar to like with the airport right now, the, the amount that the airport pays us is based on the fraction of employees on the network. So we just divide it, I think it's seven out of 80-some-odd, so whatever that ratio is, how much of the budget they actually pay. This is kind of a similar attempt. It's by no means final, or even, even maybe a good idea, but it would have to probably be something like this, but that's much further down the road. Questions about that? It was just trying to illustrate how things could potentially be broken up. So, along with this adding staff, well, regardless of integration, is a fairly expensive thing to do, which you know this from all the staff that gets added. And this was just numbers. You're going to spend 100 grand probably on personal services, personnel services, and then you're going to spend another 5,000 or 6,000 getting going, and a couple grand a year per person that gets added. So, these are all just things to think about on the budget side of things. So, we've probably had this slide in here about three times now. So anyway, cannot combine networks, not a whole lot could change initially. The third one you had in there, do you have examples?
Grand Rapids tried this, and they are now going back to the way it is now. Shared basic IT support. So one of the ideas that we had that would kind of make things easier on everybody would be say, maybe if we shared an IT support personnel that could help both sides, GIS work you had mentioned, and, but again, we're just spitballing for ideas to try and make something work that makes sense, but deeper staffing and resources would allow for more backup and redundancy personnel, self-explanatory, so.
I have a question on that. Yeah, Mr. Tissell, that help desk, you were kind of, I think, trying to find the wording for the, you don't want your highest-paid people, i.e. either of you, doing the, say, cleanup work, or lower-level work, right? Is that where your help desk person may come in at times?
Yes. The idea is that if we're working on a larger project that takes extensive amount of time and thought process into building whatever we're building, or improving whatever, improving, or fixing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, when we go and take something away from that to go fix a printer, or something like that, that, that takes time away from, you know, time-sensitive projects. That's where that's coming from. So, if that makes sense.
But that's why, when you talk about a help desk person or employee that one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Council President Bevins?
Yeah, Mr., yeah.
Will we go back to the slide on the budget?
I could try.
Because I was surprised to read, because we were notified at our meeting in November that Abby had just turned in her resignation, that's the IT data analyst. I think that was only a couple days at that point in time. Now I'm seeing that it's not even included in the budget when I thought it was in our 2025 budget. So this shows it's not even in the budget, so I'm confused on when that happened.
The IT data analyst is in the BP's list. That position is budgeted.
Really? Does it say that up there?
I made that up.
Okay.
It was an example.
That's why I just want to make sure. It's in our budget, and I heard Aaron say it wasn't in our budget, so that's why I wanted to follow up on that. I don't believe the board's eliminated that position at this point in time.
No, when we were spitballing, the idea would be like, maybe we could take.
That's why I said also, it only had been a couple of days, so there's been a couple of weeks since then, so you guys may have a recommendation that I haven't seen yet, so.
We have no official recommendation as of right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other questions? Please proceed.
Okay, I think this is where we're at. So, comes down from staff's perspective, BPU needs IT staffing as quick as possible. The city is maintaining, but that's about it. So, staff is suggesting a decision be made, because four months of limbo is not really getting us anywhere. So, either, well, it's entirely up to you guys, but of course, we're saying either maintain current structure and collaborate where possible, and, and head on down the road that way, or formally decide to do it and make a plan, I guess. Questions about that? I think that's probably just at the end. Okay, no questions there? So, not, you all seem bored to tears, not a lot of questions, so either you studied your packet well, or the point of us standing here is to answer your questions so that you can make the right decision, whatever that may be.
Are you completed with your presentation?
More or less, besides this last slide.
Okay.
And staff opinions?
We're going to give them all a chance. Let's go back to questions of you two, and then we'll see if there's any other staff comments, and I, I would certainly expect a comment from our Public Utilities Director and our city administrator.
The others don't have to.
But, questions of staff. Mr. O'Day?
So for Shawn, at City Hall, it sounds like we're okay where we're at right now, but it comes up from time to time that we could use another person to fill in during a busy season or a busy project that you're working on.
Correct.
So as we grow in the future, there will be, likely be needs at City Hall, just like there are needs right now currently at BPU.
Our toes are at the line, yes.
Okay. And sometimes we talk about efficiency here all the time, and when I, when I hear that, and I know that BPU, we've, essentially, we've budgeted through BPU's budget, we do have some room in our budget, whether something happens, we're part, we have partial pay from City Hall, from BPU's rates, it's, something's going to happen there. from City Hall, from BPU's rates. Something's going to happen there. But, for me, when I think about that, with both these departments having some needs that are more specific than others, and maybe we have somebody that can bounce back and forth between both City Hall and BPU, it does make more sense for me, in my mind, that we hire that person as just general IT. So, there has to be some form of that general IT. What that is, I don't, I saw the organizational chart that you had up there. I don't know if I agree with exactly what that looks like, how, I don't think that's the way that we should do it. I think there could be some tweaking there.
This one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, under IT director, I think there could still be a split. IT director could still head up an IT department with at least one or two that are specifically for BPU and one or two for City Hall. And in the future, as people get hired on to fill in different positions, it makes sense that they would be interchangeable unless something specific comes up. That's the way I see it. It's not really much of a question. But the other thing, you had a pros and cons slide. I don't see any of those as cons. And cons, it says it's going to trickle out slowly over many years. I don't have a problem with that at all. You know, some people might want to move quickly, but it seems like when we move really quickly, a lot of times, we don't get it right. So, I have no problem with that. But I also don't want to say we should never integrate anything in IT. So, I think we do things carefully, we do things slowly, we get it right more often than not.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments of staff? Chairman Johnson.
Thank you. First, yeah, I agree with Mike on that con. Like, if we made any changes, I would prefer it to be over a number of years and slowly so we don't break things, right? But my question is, you brought up Rochester as an example, and I looked on their site today, and they have 50,000 electric customers and whatever, 20 IT staff alone in the utility. Did you look into a city that only has three IT staff in the utility and a city hall?
It's very unique because we are an electric, water, and hydro plant, so there's no exact city that will be alike to us, obviously.
The electric and the hydro make it, make us a little bit different than everybody, but most cities have water.
Correct. Right, but they're not necessarily going to have the same builds as we do, the same specialization, the same infrastructure. Again, we're completely different than everybody else as far as how we build our infrastructure. Right? So, if we go to, like, if you do look at RPU, you know, they are still, they're using similar technology, if that makes sense. They may be bigger in scale, but obviously, BPU is not asking for that whole list of employees, right?
Right, but my question is, what do small towns do? Now, what are big cities up to? What are small towns doing with their, with their IT needs? Do you understand that question?
Sure, yeah. Yep.
So, that's just kind of something I'm just left curious with because, I mean, we could probably find some really, really complex, I bet Tokyo's IT department is nuts, but it wouldn't be comparable to us.
Right. And this was all back, created at the speculation point, the what-if point. I think if it does go that direction, we do actually ask other cities where they're at.
Right, and I think that would be next steps. I mean, even if we voted to integrate, we would still need, we need to figure out a lot of stuff financially and what it even looks like. But then, back to our equipment, pretty much our physical hardware being pretty much different on every step of the line, is that just because those products are better for utility-specific and these are better for municipal governance-specific, or is there, over the course of 20 years, where we could get on the same hardware platforms for a lot of it, so our staff across the board, either department, could help out in a time of need or vacation or whatnot?
A lot of what is on our side, the BPU side, is built specifically for the utility. So.
Really, you couldn't use a Microsoft spam filter?
Spam, a spam filter is a spam filter, yes. In that case, but I'm talking, when you get to the FortiCloud, the Fortinet, FortiEDR, the security and the security mechanisms that we have in place for BPU were built with this in mind, or we use that with the security in mind for the utility.
Okay, then, doesn't, I mean, it partially answers my question. A lot of it is utility-based, but could you use FortiCloud on the city side, or is that just a utility product?
No, we could.
So, we could, we could, over time, have in the same software, the same hardware, so everybody who works for the city brand is dealing with the same stuff and understands.
Yep.
Even though slightly different applications and processes, but the baseline is there.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I mean, if we could, I would like to, I think this is kind of a microcosm of the lack of communication between the council and the PUC since IT became prevalent in all of our lives, because there's nothing the same, and it's a bit shocking. But, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so I'll piggyback on that. That was my first thought as well, was, you know, that's, that's.
He asked first. You can be next, Patrick.
Come on now. I'm going to start getting sweaty here after a little bit. There's a lot of, a lot of fur going on here. My first, my first thought in looking at was exactly what you said, Gabe, in that, that it's slightly alarming in that, you know, like, those are the types of things we should be paying better attention to, because we could have got ahead of this a long time ago with those types of things. My question would be like, what type of timeframe, like realistically? Let's say we said, you got to shift everything over, over time. What type of realistic timeframe? And I don't, I'm right there with you in the go-slow approach to this. Like, if you were to like, take a slow approach to it, what type of timeframe would it take to change over all of that stuff?
My question to that is, to what extent and what are you actually trying to accomplish by changing it?
Well, so, that would be, that would come down to my second point of this. The whole point of the integration thing would be to make your guys' lives easier.
Right.
Like, in all honesty, like, I hear you say going and helping someone hook a printer up is not what your guys' pay scale should be doing. I absolutely agree with that. You helping Kevin Stunick figure out how his laptop works is not what I want you two doing. So, if we can figure out ways, if we can figure out ways of having staff underneath that can help, I'd like to see your guys' jobs become easier, because when we get to the top, we should be efficient. We should be able to get things done that we need to get done, because like you said, if we're completely stacked and we can't get after large projects, if we're completely locked down on stuff, that, that's worrisome when something comes along. That also makes it so that we're not mobile. We can't make decisions that allow us to move things back and forth. I, that's the type of stuff that, when we say this, I'd like to see what that would potentially look like. The other two questions that I had on that was just, you have the union contracts. Are either of you two union?
I am not.
No. Yeah, okay, I didn't think so. Okay, because I just wanted to double-check on that. So, there potentially would be an opportunity, since there is an opening on the BPU side, of just getting that part of it switched, so that we're having the person under the, underneath the right union. There's potential for something with that. But, my bigger question to you guys is, what, what does your total IT personnel look like? Like, if you're looking at the system that we have right now, what is your total number of IT people?
Go to that slide with spitballing.
I went the wrong way, sorry.
The one where you had the.
It's my first day.
That guy right there.
Nope, the other one.
He just blew right by it.
The one with your Excel.
Oh, that's some of the new stuff, okay. That.
As far, the second slide, the 2025, would be where at least BPU needs to be for the foreseeable future.
Fully built out, roughly six, certainly five, ideally six FTE.
Because I'm of the same ilk that these two gentlemen are as well, in that I'd like to see at least a individual that is able to shift between the two. If it's just, as I said, to help Kevin Stunick figure out his laptop, I'd like to have someone that's able to do that. You never know where Kevin's going to be. You never know. He could be on, in any building at any day.
Measuring snowfall like a mad dog.
But I just, that's the type of stuff that I'd like to see us at least get a handle on, and then just an idea of, like, long-term timeframe. If it is possible to make those lists start to look like each other, just from our standpoint, when we're sitting on this side, when you show two things like that, that's when people start going, okay, what are we doing? Why are things completely different? But, I understand that, you know, we have two very different departments.
And they're built that way for the reason of what we need them for, specifically designed for, Sean focuses on this side, what he needs for, for the resources that he needs, and BPU is using that for the resources that they need, for the 24/7 operation. It's specifically designed like that. And I had that in my email originally back to Mr. Broyles here, that the city IT, BPU IT are separate entities that are not connected to each other by design, except when needed and already connected. This is not set up this way because of any negative connotation toward each other. In fact, we work well with each other when we have to, but because it's considered best practice in the IT security world. Each entity has their own speciality toward how each network functions. That's why they're different. Right? So, and I went on to kind of explain a little bit more on that in that email, but they're that way because of what we do operationally at BPU, because of what Sean does operationally here. They're going to be two completely separate, different worlds for a reason.
Sure, but there are things that we could change, and there, there are people lower on the totem pole that could be, could do task for both.
Right. I was, I was talking about hardware and stuff like that, so.
I think that answers me for now. Patrick?
It's a year later, a different role, well, actually, the same role when Dolly and I went into the closed session with council, asking for BPU staff. And so, I'm here again saying, I appreciate the discussion about integration. I read the reports on integration. I'm not sure why we've been delayed in hiring our staff. And so, I would ask council to please expedite the process of filling at least the one position for our IT. I know integration can still happen if you're going through that process, but I would ask that you get that done as soon as possible.
Thank you. Gabe Johnson?
I just want to, I just want to respond to Patrick. When that employee resigned, Director Evans came to the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting and said, we don't want it backfilled. And then, and then at the most recent city council meeting, when we approved the, at the meeting where we approved the BPU budget, we were told there are no job descriptions, there are no position descriptions. We aren't ready to just go hire somebody right now. That's where the city council's at, Patrick. That's what I've heard. So, we can't just decide tonight to go forward and hire.
Well, you, you didn't have it on the agenda, so you couldn't, but I mean.
But when the one resigned, we could have, we could have backfilled. We were asked not to.
And I'm not even worried about the backfilling. I'm talking about the network director that was in the 2024 budget, that's in the 24 and 25 budget, so. That's where I'm at.
Get a position description put together.
That's part of what we're doing here this evening, and part of the timeliness of this discussion is so we can, can do that most efficiently. So, I think we're all in agreement that, that we probably need some new staff, and we've approved two new staff. Who had their hand up over here? Tiffany?
I, I think I'm really on the same page with, you know, the other folks who've spoken. The process is not, all of those obstacles, they're not going to get smaller. You know, the longer we drag, if it's going to take 20 years, you had everything lined up, it's not going to be less than 20 years if we wait 10 years to start the process. And I appreciate that we're not going to go to one network, and that there are reasons for that, but we are one city. We are one-brainer. And I think we need to treat our departments like that. We are one-brainer. And, and I think this falls under that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Mr. O'Day?
Yeah, I think, piggybacking on that, it's, what do we want to, do we want to be further apart in 10, 20 years, or do we want to be closer together? So, we're deciding, as we take those little steps forward, including hiring positions and position descriptions and all that detail, when we do these things, we have to have this in mind, so that we set up the next generation to be running more efficiently. And efficiency isn't just hiring less people, it's, sometimes it's hiring more people. It's not always about money and number of humans. It's about how well an organization is running. So, how separate it is right now, I hope it's not that separate, except for the few things that are supposed to be. That always is going to be that way, but I think there needs to be some integration along the way, as we grow, as we change, as we hire people. That needs to be kept in mind as we go forward.
Thank you. Dolly Matton?
All right. First of all, I just want to thank both of you for doing such a great job in putting, putting this together. Collectively, you have 60 years' experience between the three people, so your opinions and your outcome is very much appreciated and valued. What I'm hearing and what I've read is ultimately, I think, you both, all three of you, would agree that we could use somebody as a business office specialist immediately that could be shared citywide, right, between city and BPU, is what I'm hearing. Somebody that's going to help with printers and set up computers and what have you, that, that is something that, it sounds like both sides could agree on, that that would be something that we could potentially look at. That, to me, is low-hanging fruit, is what I'm looking at. Right? Mike, did I not hear you right?
I agree. I mean, that's the bare minimum, but.
Bare minimum.
I mean, position-wise, the part of the business support specialist is specific to BPU, and is not really an IT function.
Okay, so let's.
But yes, call it whatever you want.
Call it whatever you want, but I'm.
Basic IT support.
I'm hearing there's somebody on a, that doesn't need to have your level of expertise that could be hired, that could help assist everyone, right?
Correct.
Both sides, okay. That's why I want to, because we need to make sure we're clear in when it comes to hiring on union sites, because what I'm understanding from our joint meetings was that to be hired under the city side can work under all departments, but to be hired under BPU side can only work on BPU stuff. So, I want to keep that in mind. So, that's why I asked. If we're understanding that that is one position that we could, if we're going to integrate at some point, we could look at that as almost an immediate. I, I'm begging for that network administrator. Aaron has been working night and day, and I don't know how much you could ask of one person for so long. I mean, that, I just, and I thought that you had created a couple of potential job descriptions, so I know we're not totally in the dark on that one, so we've got at least the seed started on that one, so I appreciate that. I just appreciate because what you've done is you have enlightened us all that there are some products that we have purchased and that we're investing in, that the city side could potentially be utilizing what we have invested in on our side, on the BPU, I shouldn't say our side, on the BPU side, right? The Fortinet is, I guess, some of those things, some of those products. And that's, as we move forward, I would only hope that that communication would continue to, I guess, be discussed, so that we, so that when it comes time to renew a contract or to invest in additional software, that it obviously isn't cheap, that we're looking at, that is where, years down the road, we are integrating in some of those things. So, it would make it a little easier when hiring new staff. So, I think I just, that's ultimately, we've talked about this in great length. I think there's some areas that definitely we could potentially share in the IT department, but I think rather than continue to talk about it and, and struggle in not getting some of these positions filled, it, it's, it hurts everybody. So, that's all I wanted to mention. And again, thank you very much for putting this together. We value your opinions.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council or commission?
Mr. Bevins?
Mr. Chaslin?
This position that was foremost approved at the commission meeting, and I think it was called a sample job description, that was actually put together almost a month ago now. And, you know, we know what we heard is, we have to get pay grid approved or figured out, a specific job description figured out. Is there any kind of an update we might be able to get on to where those two elements of this new position for the public utilities, is that the one that we hear is highly needed? Is that available, or any maybe preliminary?
Jeff, I'm going to let HR Director Schubert answer that.
So, good evening. The job descriptions that were proposed.
So, good evening. The job descriptions that were proposed were only if the person worked at BPU. And it stated who that person reported to. So if this would be, if this department would be integrated, some of those duties would change. And that's why we need direction from council before we can actually finalize those job descriptions. What duties will they be? Will they be more than just BPU department, will they be helping in other areas? Who will this per- person actually be reporting to? All of those things need to be in that job description before we actually even do the wage. So that's why we listed it as an example, Jeff, so that the commission had an idea of what that position would do, but we're not ready yet to finalize a job description until the council gives us direction, which way we should be going.
So, if, if we hire a position that's going to be, um, essentially working both utility and city, that position cannot be a BPU employee based on the union status, correct?
HR Director Schubert again.
So, I would consider that very similar to our HR assistant position. That position is under a city department right now. That position works at the public utilities department, but is a member of the IBW Administrative Support Union, not the Public Utilities Union.
Okay, so I think what I heard there is if we hire a position that's gonna work at both, and I think Dolly mentioned this, and Kelly, you and I have heard this before, that if there's work done at both public utilities and city, they cannot be a public utility union, uh, represented by the public utility union, correct?
HR Director Schubert again.
Yes, I would be looking at, and I'm looking at Will Keys, he's in the audience, Will is the business agent for IBW. Um, there is a, uh, certification information from BMS as far as who can be in what union. And I believe that the Public Utilities Union says that it is for public utility department employees. But we can double-check that for sure, unless Will is aware of something specifically.
Mr. Cheswick?
Okay, but, eh, I mean, we, we were told that you cannot have a utility employee working in, under the roof of the city, uh, fi- facility, IT facilities. So, and, and I'm not sure if that's established now, based on what I'm hearing. 'Cause Dolly mentioned it, you and I have heard it, Kelly, at the same meeting Dolly, you and I were at. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm, again, I'm not fully sure. And we heard Chris say just a minute ago that we need to establish who this employee would be working for. And during the budget period of the, on the second, I had asked about that, um, who, what union, or actually at our last meeting, I asked, well, what union will this employee that utilities has budgeted be working for? What, what, so I, I, I'm really hesitant to, we, Chris is asking, asking, um, council to make a decision essentially, as to what we're gonna do with that employee, and what, what direction we're gonna take. But, we don't know. I mean, how do we take direction when we don't know how it's gonna work? Nobody's told me for sure how that works. So I'm, 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 I, I understand it's hard to figure out sometimes, I, I, uh, you know, HR is not in my wheelhouse. I mean, eh, this is why we hire people, and this is why we have people, uh, union reps and all that stuff, and I wanna make sure we're making the right decision, and, so, eh, I, I, we're, if we're being asked to do something, we have to know what we're being asked to do, and I don't hear that yet. Uh, Dolly heard the same thing, right? I, I mean, it gives them, that, if you're unionized at utility, you can't work under the city roof. You've heard that too, is that correct? Mr. Bevins?
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did you hear that or not at the meeting we were at?
Yeah, I did hear that.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. So I wanna make sure I know what we're doing. I don't think that's asking too much. The other thing I would say is when we talk about integration, the whole idea of this, as far as I remember, was in efficiency, and I.e. meaning saving money, doing what's best interest of the taxpayers and ratepayers of the city of Brainerd. And, um, if, if I were to ask Sean or Aaron or both of them, um, do, are you still there?
They're still here, yeah.
Do you see efficiencies in that regard if we were to integrate in any way you can speculate how this might work? The saving money by integration?
I do not.
Yeah, I got the thinking face. I don't see it being cheaper, no.
Okay. So, I, I mean, and everybody wants to be more efficient, and, and like, I think we all heard that being, um, more efficient doesn't always come with a cost savings, sometimes it's just more sensible. If we have, uh, a redundancy, that's sensible. If we don't have redundancies, meaning somebody to fill in, if somebody gets sick or hurt, or can't work, or quits, or whatever it might be. So, I wanna make sure we have redundancies, because this is a very important, uh, these are very important positions to have IT functioning properly at all times, especially for, uh, utility. It's a 24-hour-a-day, 365-days-a-year operation. So, I, I, not sure if I'm, uh, not sure if I can make a decision tonight on what we're being asked to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council or the commission? Dolly Matten?
I, I just, I forgot to mention, um, Ted, uh, sent an, um, email, and I just wanted to make sure that I read his points of concern. He just had, eh, um, put in the email at this time, he had, uh, the risk proposed by a full integration of IT departments, including reduced security redundancy and increased vulnerability of critical systems, significantly outweighed the perceived benefits, potential efficiencies, or potential cost savings that may or may not be associated with full integration of IT departments. However, some aspects of the partial IT department, such as cross-training between IT departments for emergency backup situations, or some basic help desk functions, would be ideal. And I just wanted to make sure I included his comments, um, since he wasn't able to be here.
Thank you. I'll ask a second time if there's anybody in the council or commission who has any questions of our staff. Um, I, as I said, I'm gonna let our public utilities director and our city administrator add their comments, but is there any questions from any other staff? Comments? Okay?
Uh, I got one question, I think of, um, Administrator Broyles, I...
Yeah, now's the time.
So, based on the staff here in the room, um, I, I, I've asked you this before at one of our work groups. Are they, do they have free will to speak and tell us what they think regardless of, no ramifications, no repercussions? Is that something we still have on the table, Mr. Broyles?
I have not directed any of the presenters tonight, nor Mr. Evans, on what to say or what not to say, so they are free to say whatever they wish.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Bevins?
You have the floor.
Well, I'd ask Mr. Evans then, uh, do you feel this is in the best interests of, uh...
He'll get his chance, like I said. I, we're in the, I wanna make sure that every, all the questions get asked, and then we're gonna give Mr. Evans a chance to speak, and Mr. Broyles a chance to speak. I'd prefer everybody...
I'm not stopping him from speaking, Kelly.
What's that?
I'm not stopping him from speaking, I'm just asking him a question.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask my question, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Evans, do you have any concerns about integration as you've seen it described here tonight?
Thank you, Councilman Cheswick. I guess I should first preface that, uh, I would fully support whatever the council comes up with, whether it's integration or to remain separate. And that I would do my due diligence to see that the will of the council is done. Working with Administrator Broyles, so, I guess just to preface that, that at this point, I don't think there's an official direction at this point, but I would say that whenever, you know, the vote is done, regardless, that, uh, the utility department would, uh, capitulate and cheerfully acquiesce to the will of the council. With that said, uh, with 30 years' experience in utilities, I've seen, uh, the spectrum. To Councilman Johnson's point as to, oh, yeah, cities of similar size, uh, what's been done? Again, there's a spectrum, you know, you can have a 16,000 population city that is, that the, that the IT is strictly contracted out with a, uh, technology company provider. And of course, obviously, there's pitfalls with that, that is, the economies and things fluctuate, that, you know, if your local computer company, computer store goes out of business, and that was your sole supplier, vendor, now you're scrambling to, uh, find alternatives, whether or not that's built into an emergency response plan or some other contingency analysis, uh, for that. On the other hand, you know, again, you know, 16,000-plus city that's integrated, very much like Brainerd. We're, we're not the only city that's integrated. Again, you know, lots of examples, you start looking at, you know, 50,000 population, and, uh, for that, you'd have to look at the history. Was that utility always a 50,000 customer utility? You know, at some point in the past, it was a 16,000-member utility, you know? So you have to dig a little deeper, do the research, do the due diligence. When it was 16,000, was it already integrated, or what was the magic number? What were the prevailing conditions, circumstances? Again, you know, every city is unique. There really is no such thing as a cookie cutter, per se. That there's always prevailing circumstances, conditions, political environment, if you will. So again, you know, very complex question. Is what Brainerd has now, uh, being separate work? I would say the answer is yes. The question is, as an integrated model, would that work? Yes. Would an integrated model be as efficient as the separate groups? Again, my personal experience in dealing in the industry, I would probably say no. And then, of course, you know, you, exam, uh, this slide 24 that's up, you can see that, uh, if you look at the bottom line there, full-time employees, if city side and utility side stay separate, but we actually expand, we would go from four to five FTEs. But if we integrate, eh, the number's actually six. So that's why the integrated version is the 100,000 more a year potentially, uh, as opposed to staying separate, uh, moving forward. And then, of course, again, this was just representative numbers, but, you know, to go in there and say, "Oh, the network administrator would spend 80% of their time doing utility work, 20% of the time doing city work." Again, I guess obviously, the more correct approach to that would be for payroll to say, "Okay, what was the actual hours, keep track of your time," and, you know, and, and expand that out. You know, say, "How many hours did you work for the police department? How many hours did you work for the airport? How many hours?" And, you know, actually get that data and come back with some numbers. But with that being said, that integrated, uh, I mean, uh, part of the struggle or the conversation that has been presented is specialization. That if you have an integrated group, that realistically, you're going to have subject matter experts for particular applications, whether it's the OT, the IT, what have you. So to just randomly come up with percentages, or splits, or allocations, when the reality is that, for example, Aaron is pretty much a subject matter expert for anything that would be in the utility department. So the reality would be that he would most likely be 100% or 99.9% of the time focused on, uh, utility work. So, I mean, obviously, we always aspire, and we wanna develop and look forward, uh, plan ahead, and I, absolutely, look for, uh, opportunities to share and learn and have the support backup. I mean, one thing that we do talk about on, uh, both sides of the river, I mean, we're all city departments, and, and the one thing that, as a city, that, you know, we pride ourselves on, or at least are trying to strive for, is work-life balance. Yes, absolutely, we need to find Aaron some backup. Absolutely, we need to find Sean and Lori some backup. They need to have work-life balance. They don't need to be on-call 24/7. So again, I, uh, the short answer is, uh, you know, that I will do what the will of the council is, and we will make anything work. But, uh, until that point, that I guess I would be in the minority opinion that, uh, integration total would probably not be appropriate. However, a shared resource at a help desk level would not be a bad idea. Again, like I said, Sean, Lori, eh, they're subject matter experts for their specific roles on their side, whether it's the criminal justice-type applications for police department, whatever. That skillset Aaron does not have. Can he learn that? Absolutely. Once he's learned it, given that Sean and Lori would be more of the primary roles for that, when the time comes when he's needing to be the support for that function, is it an efficient support? Is it that he can, you know, fix the problem in the same amount of time that Sean, Lori, or a subject matter expert for that particular, uh, application could do? You know, again, in other words, is it something where, uh, Sean or Lori could fix it in 30 minutes, whereas it would take Sean four hours because he only looked at it or had dealt with it for an hour and three years, as an example? So again, I can add additional comment as additional questions come in, or what have you. But again, you know, uh, as far as the utility, we have specialized systems and infrastructure. Security and compliance is slightly different. Again, you know, we're looking for efficiencies, operational efficiency. Utilities are basically what we would consider mission-critical, and downtime has severe consequences. Not saying that city, uh, side functions aren't critical, but, you know, some things you can keep till morning, some things you need to try, come up with a solution and a response in a matter of minutes or within an appropriate amount of time. And, so again, I will, I guess, uh, stop at this point unless there's additional questions that we wanna pursue. So, thank you for the time.
Mr. Cheswick?
Thank you, I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council or commission or other staff? Mr. Habegors, please come up to the microphone, state your name and position with the city.
Mike Habegors, Public Works Director. Currently, I have five divisions underneath me, four of those five have separate programs that I have to administer, and Sean administers. If I actually separated from the city and created my own group, would there be a reason to do that? And that's why I say that, is that I have a pretty complex department with engineer, transit, and so forth. And I just don't see that being realistic. Would you separate me if integration isn't a good idea? I, I just, I just wanna throw that question out there to the council, 'cause we are one team. And I wanna thank the, the BPU staff, like our engineer, he, when he wants to have a look at the water lines, he needs to go over to BPU, and graciously, thank you again for allowing him to do that. But with integration, we could actually do that here too. And again, it's just something about making one team, and I just wanted to indicate, I have, again, five departments, four of which have their own programming, but you would not separate me from the city. So I just wanted to articulate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, before I turn it over to our directors? All right. Mr. Evans, you've had, uh, your, uh, time answering Mr. Cheswick's question, but is there anything else you'd like to add to the... else you'd like to add to the discussion on integration?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, just to try to be a succinct little bit of a rant, if I may, try to keep it under three minutes so we can get home tonight. I guess, first off, I would say that, I guess, the term "integration" is being misused to an extent. In the business world, which I've operated in, we have vertical integration, is when we streamline operations by taking ownership of a process from contractors or other vendors. This is not horizontal integration either, as the plan does not come up with any additional services or increases production. We remain the same city. BPU is looking to expand the utility department to mitigate single-point-of-failure scenarios, as well to deliver upon city and utility statements of promoting work-life balance to employees. So what we really are dealing with, because as you get to know me, that, you know, I stickler for detail, that in reality, the, what was proposed is actually matrix management, where you have the vertical chain of command. So for a city or a company, let us say that you have a finance department, you have an engineering department, you have IT/OT department, that in matrix management, that it is not necessarily a full-time functional scenario, that matrix management is pretty much project-based management, where you would have a functional manager, and then you would have a project manager. So in the case of where you have, on the one slide where you showed the IT department, and then, of course, the concept of saying, oh, this is a percentage or majority BPU, or this is a percentage-majority city side, that what happens in that scenario, you very quickly create a two-manager scenario, in that you have your functional manager based on the division or department that you're pulling the talent from, and then you have the project manager, which would be the department or the specific project manager or lead that that employee is being used for. So I know it's kind of convoluted, because I don't have any visuals to share, but again, like I said, you know, the hierarchical organizational chart, we have this vertical-down, if you will, type behavior going on. And then, for a project management, you have a horizontal. So a good example is, let's take a Boeing, or an aerospace company, or an automotive company, and we're saying, okay, we are going to build a 757. Okay, you are going to be the manager for our 757 product line. You tell us what you need. Okay? I need an IT person, I need the engineer, I need my fina, I need a finance person. And so that's basically the model that we, that's being presented or created, or what we're discussing with for the scenario, that for IT, that BPU would be the project owner, or it could be that Public Works is the project owner, or the police department is the project owner. So, and whether it's Sean, Aaron, or whoever else is the IT director, they are the functional manager. They are, so the question becomes that, you know, obviously, we're looking for efficiencies, we're one city, but when certain priorities, or scopes, or visions don't align, for whatever reason, now you have that particular asset or individual basically having to deal with two managers. If my project manager is telling me to go in this direction, but my functional manager is telling me to go in this direction, you know, that creates some issues. So in addition to some of the pros and cons that were discussed, in the slides, I would just share some pros and cons with matrix management. The pros, you know, I'm not the Negative Nellie, I will absolutely share the positives of matrix management first. Pros: Having two managers may mean that you get access to different strengths and learning opportunities, with the caveat, however, that an open-door policy, or a team or collaborative environment, you can still get that. A matrix structure gives employees an opportunity to learn skill sets, although job titles, descriptions, coupled with performance review process, does have a negative consequence of potentially discouraging professional development. Two managers can absolutely create a teamwork dynamic, although, as I've said on many times before, for the sake of efficiency, let's look at ways of discouraging opportunities or avenues for creating drama. Theoretical collaboration between departments. You know, again, when you have one department that has goals and visions versus another department whose priorities may be different, how do we address that? I'll find some stuff here. Cons. Okay, but, again, cons. When multiple people assign tasks and review your work, it can be challenging to maintain clear instruction without communication, without miscommunication, which can lead to inefficiency. Obviously, communication, regardless of the outcome of this evening, communication is paramount. We are one city, everybody needs to know what everybody is doing, point blank. Implementing a matrix structure makes it difficult to gauge employee performance when working on a project, in part because team members essentially perform more than one role, functionally and within a project. So a project manager may see results from an employee that the functional manager does not, but yet, when it comes to performance reviews, or whatever, is this person exceeding in their project, or are they just achieving in their function? Matrix organization structure can also sometimes lead to work overload, since team members must handle project work in addition to regular work. Employees might suffer burnout, overlook tasks, fail to complete them, or have their work quality suffer due to time constraints. Slow decision-making because a matrix calls for more than one manager. Decisions can sometimes take longer in a traditional hierarchical structure. Furthermore, with integration, multiple managers and team members, decisions that require multiple steps, quality assurance, et cetera, can be slowed down, which in turn, obviously, you want to take care, thought, and have quality and craft in your work, but again, you know, there's a fine line for taking too long to complete something versus doing it. And of course, different management styles or goals may lead to two managers having different priorities. Again, that seems to be a recurring theme for these cons, but, you know, obviously, the power dynamics need to be, that, which hasn't been discussed, obviously, this is a work in progress, but to that, that again, you know, if the functional manager and a project manager, you know, who gets the 51% vote for how something is to be done? And of course, I can cite examples, but I don't think I need to go into the weeds, because some past practice and some things that have gone on here in the city, you know, that's kind of evident for scenarios or situations where we're kind of set up that way, either officially or unofficially. So I guess with that, that's kind of my opening remarks. Again, thank you very much for the time. Questions, comments, observations, welcome.
Thank you. Any additional comments for Mr. Evans? Mr. Broyles?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments. I wholeheartedly believe in centralized command and control and decentralized execution. That means there's one person at the top, and the work is spread out amongst the staff as talents and functional requirements demand. So I think we can administratively integrate these two departments and make virtually no changes operationally at all, so I do not see any increased cost in this at all. What I do see is a clear chain of command, a clear chain of communication, and that's going to inherently make us more efficient. Furthermore, if I'm a director and I have two people in my department, or if I'm a director and I have four to six people in my department, the four to six people inherently gives me more operational flexibility as, as we conduct business, day-to-day business. We can create cross-training opportunities to mitigate operational deficiencies, but to me, it's imperative that we have one person that is calling the shots for a department. That's, in 35 years of working, every, every organization I've been in operates that way, and the drama that I've experienced here is more than all of the other places I've been at combined. It's astonishing. So, a couple of comments. I was hired nearly 10 months ago, and I, council, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think a large part of why I was hired was due to my leadership experience and skills. We certainly have challenges regarding our organizational culture and our identity. The culture amongst staff is fractured and at times unhealthy. Our identity has yet to come into clear focus for me, and a unified vision for the city is incomplete. Brainerd is a great community with engaged elected leaders, a committed staff, and a public that deserves the highest quality services we can provide. These obstacles I've described are not insurmountable, and they can be overcome. Organizational challenges manifest themselves in many ways, and if we address merely the symptoms, we may enjoy temporary success for a limited time. However, if we want long-lasting transformational change for the city of Brainerd, it's going to require foundational changes in the way we conduct city business and a shift in our paradigm. We can create a healthy, robust organizational culture and a shared organizational identity that will make us better public servants and produce the outcomes we desire. Based on my experience, it's my conviction that intentional, targeted, functional integration, when and where appropriate, is the path to continued and future success for the city of Brainerd. Staff remains committed to transparency, efficiency, financial stewardship, and acting in the best interest of our residents. To that end, I strongly recommend that the city council support the integration of our two IT departments into one department, and would pursue, and would pursue opportunities for additional integration in the future. I've been working for 35 years in professional, well-run organizations, and I, I know how to lead the city of Brainerd to the next level. I also understand my role as the chief administrative officer for the city. I'm not an elected official, and I do not answer directly to the voters. In a representative form of government such as ours, the elected officials that are on the dais here tonight, they represent the 15,000-plus members of our community. City council directs policy and staff executes the same. Whatever city council decides in this matter, or any matter, all of city staff will get behind it in word and in deed, as we serve your constituents. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, we've had an awful lot of discussion, questions, comments. Anybody care to make a motion? Chairman Johnson?
I would move that we direct staff to create a single-integrated city IT department in ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stengline. Comments on the motion? Chairman Johnson?
Thank you. I, I make this motion for a multitude of reasons, nothing nefarious about it, but I think it could work, and I haven't been convinced that there's no way this will benefit anything. So I think staff should continue working forward on this, continue moving towards integration. And, you know, I know one of the biggest negatives that I kept hearing is, well, rate payers, or utility, or enterprise funds, but we have so many enterprise funds in this city. We have environmental resource tech, who is a one person paid 100% by an enterprise fund, but he doesn't need his own IT department. He just uses Sean, and a portion of Sean's salary is paid by that utility revenue. It's, it's not some mysterious thing, it's something that the accountants can figure out, certainly. But overall, I just think moving them into one department and getting as much equipment and as much shared staff as possible will be beneficial. If you look back up to here, yes, it does go from five to six, but that sixth job is a GIS specialist, could be working in both departments with, working on plans and specs for all of our projects moving forward, making us a better-run organization, who's providing better service to our citizens. And would it cost $100,000? Yes. Would it be worth it to the citizens? Potentially. And I think it's a path we need to go down and see if it works. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the motion? Any other comments on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Evans.
Mr. Chesick. So when we say to move forward with integration, and I, I, this comes back to the need immediately, okay? How, how, maybe I could get an explanation if Gabe's thinking of this, I don't know, but we've heard it over and over that Aaron needs help, and I think we all agree. So how does this expedite that? I mean, just saying to move forward with integration, is, can we take care of that with this motion, you think, Gabe?
Gabe's willing to answer that. Mr. Chesick?
Yeah, Jeff, I think it does. I think what they were waiting on is, are we integrating or are we not? Either way, we move forward. I think we are moving forward and getting Aaron the help he needs. I don't think it slows or speeds up the process either way. It's this decision is what needed to be made, and voting yes on this makes the decision made.
Mr. Chesick?
I would, I'd say, I, I met with Mike and Nick today, and I thought it was a fan, a very informative meeting, okay? And I appreciate the meeting. It was, it was a lot of stuff, you know, and it's, yeah, the whole time, I got home late this, late this morning, and I'm thinking about everything that we talked about, virtually till the time I got here, and it didn't really tell me, I'm trying to, I'd like to absorb this more, I'd like to, my thought was, when I, you know, got back home and I'm thinking about what we talked about, and I thought, boy, if I could just sit down for another hour or so, maybe once, maybe twice, with a few of the individuals that were, you know, either I met with today, or include a couple more that we talked about, and try and, you know, get, get to the heart of what the issues are. And I hope, I don't know if appropriate, but I would hope that everybody's had a similar meeting with Mike, and I don't know that, though. And it just seems like there's some things that I could get so much clearer in my head to figure this out, but as it is, we have a motion and a second, so it's time for a vote, and I just wanted to make that a point, that I don't know if I'm ready to approve this or not, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mayor Bedeau?
Can I ask for, like, what kind of envisioned timeline are you thinking for this? Obviously, immediately to get a job in line, either or, immediately to get a job in line so that we can get help to Aaron would be ideal, but in terms of the broader scope of this?
To my motion, it's to move forward. I would put Nick in charge of any of the other details.
I'll direct my question to you then, Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, if the council does approve this integration, I intend to get on a downhill slope and aggressively pursue this. How that would happen, in my mind, is we would quickly rewrite the PD for the director position, if necessary, make the necessary changes. We would get that out and perhaps advertise it internally for five days and see what kind of interest we get. The first thing is, is the most important thing is to get a director in place, and then, now we have a lever that we can pull and a belly button, and I can talk to that director and say, this is the schedule that we need to get on, this is what I need from you, and I can start tasking that individual to provide necessary plans as we need them. But my intent would be to get on a downward slope and aggressively pursue this. I think staff, on both sides, and I think most would agree with this, staff would certainly appreciate a definitive answer from council, so we can get out of this, this limbo stage, because it's, it's challenging, and the rumor mill continues to perpetuate, and anxiety continues to perpetuate, so whatever council decides, all of staff in this room will support it, and we will get behind it. But if it is approved, we will get a job description published for the director, we'll get that position hired, and then we'll move from there as aggressively as we can.
Mr. Bedeau?
How quickly, before we can get support staff to BPU?
Yeah, Chris Schubert? Yeah, Chris, Chris Schubert will answer that to the best of her ability.
Usually takes us about six weeks or so to be able to advertise, interview, and get someone on board. That is a very, um, tight schedule. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer.
Mayor Bedeau?
My follow-up to that, though, does that then mean we're compounding six on six? Or are we able to potentially get a position that can be a shared position for BPU, so that they can continue to have some stress relief, essentially, or, or relief from, um, the excess duties while we're creating the director and creating the, the positions underneath?
May, Mr. President?
Mr. Broyles?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would commit staff that we would pursue that path as aggressively as we can. I understand we need help, and, um, I want to make sure that all of our staff have what they need to be successful. So, we will accelerate this process as fast as we can and get that position filled.
Just to clarify, though, are we talking director needs to be filled first, prior to support staff?
That would be my preference. I'd like to have the director filled first, because that person should really, I'm not a micromanager, so if I hire a director, uh, I want to know what that director needs to be successful, and whatever they say they need, I'm going to work toward that end. And if there's obstacles on their way, I'm going to try to remove, remove those obstacles for them.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was aware of that.
Any other questions or comments on the motion?
Mr. Evans?
I'm, I'm going to go O'Day and then Chesick.
Hearing, hearing Mr. Broyles' comments makes, does make me feel more comfortable moving forward with this. I feel like he's confident in what he sees going forward in this specific part in this department. I know there's hesitancy throughout, um, maybe throughout staff. But we hired Administrator Broyles to do a job, and we have to let him do it to the best of his ability, or we're holding him back. And I'd like to see confidence throughout the organization in Mr. Broyles in those decisions. Going forward with integration, we're talking about IT. And I'm, the only thing that's hesitant on my end is how fast that's moving, but this is, this is pretty specific, the way I see it. I just hope that as we go further, I know there's been comments on different departments integrating in different ways. I want to really take a slow look at those things as we keep moving forward. That would be my preference. As we see things, I think, I think you, you said it very well in your comments, very targeted, specific, functional improvements in, in the integration and other parts, uh, going forward. That makes me feel more comfortable. And, uh, I think I'm, I'm going to support this motion. I think it's going to be a good move.
Thank you, Mr. Chesick.
I just asked for a roll call vote.
Yeah, that makes sense, especially with one being missing. Any other comments on the motion? Mr. Mayor?
It is a second comment, but I do just want to tell staff that this is stuff that we take very serious. And, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of data and a lot of information. No, but just, let me speak for half a friggin' second, please. Thank you. And I know I, I look like an idiot right now, but that's okay. I'm okay with that. Uh, this is stuff we take very serious, and I, I, uh, because you said that about, you know, the, the stress and the stuff that's happening and, and the rumor mongering that happens. I'm a guy that likes to take our time figuring out where we're going to go, and then when we go, go. When we go and when we make decisions, let's move forward. But in the, in the process of doing this, I think if there are other things that we're looking at doing as a city, it's important for us to make sure that we're getting the correct information and that we're doing things on a pace that is appropriate. So, I'm not a guy that likes to go at things with a hatchet. I just don't. I don't like that, that approach, so. But I, I do like everything we've heard here tonight. I do like seeing this stuff and hearing you say, you know, like, on a day-to-day basis, here's the struggles that we would have, here's the things that we have to do. I, we need to hear that. We need to hear that from our staff, and we need to hear that from the individuals that are involved with it. But you also, you also made me more confident in our ability to do things as well, so I appreciate it. And I just want to say thank you to our staff and to the commission for being here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think you look very nice. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We've had a request for a roll call. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stengline. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Chesick?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, that motion passes unanimously.
Mr. President?
Mr. Johnson?
I don't know if another motion is in order, but is there any action we can take tonight to expedite the IT director hiring process, since we don't meet for nearly two more weeks?
Let's ask Ms. Schubert that question, and then Mr. O'Day has another question as well. HR Director Schubert, do you understand the question?
I believe so. So, what needs to happen is we need to come with an IT director job description as soon as possible. I don't know if you want to have a special meeting to review that specifically, to move it faster. That would really be about the only thing, unless the council gives a certain, give staff authority to finalize it and you ratify it at the next meeting, you would have to give us more direction or more authority than what we currently have in order to move it any faster.
Okay, and then a follow-up question. Could we post both jobs? The IT director and the network or systems analyst or whatever, also, could we post both of those at the first meeting in January?
We could. It would be nice to have the director's input as far as what he wants to see in that job description.
Oh, true.
So, that's the only thing that's really slowing us up, but we, I value the input of our department heads, what should be in there. I am not an IT expert, and I need their guidance on what should be there for those duties, minimum requirements, those types of things. But, um, we can draft one, we could ask Sean and Aaron to look at them, to see if they have input or thoughts. That would be, that would be the fastest way to do it, or just do the IT director first and then move forward. We would like direction, how you would like us to proceed.
Okay, yeah, I don't know, then, I don't think there's anything we can do.
Thank you. Chairman, uh, O'Day? That answered my, that answered my question. Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Mr. Chesick?
When Chris, when you said you'd like to have, have the input of the IT director before you look at the other job, um, were you talking about specifically, would you, would you say Sean and Aaron can do that instead of having the IT director in place before we do that? Did I misunderstand how you said?
What would happen in that situation is, if they disagreed on something, someone would have to make a final decision. So, either Nick or I would have to look at it and say, this is what is, really should be happening. That's why I would prefer to work with the director. That person is responsible for that position and that employee. They know what they're looking for. I don't. So, that's why we need to work with the department head. That would be my preference.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff or comments? Then we are looking for a motion to adjourn.
Were, were you going to take the roll call vote?
Passed unanimously.
Passed unanimously.
Voted yes, Kevin.
Check his network connectivity, please.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Stunek, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Merry Christmas.